Just for folks waiting online, we ended up not needing to call anyone into the executive session. We're gonna do everything here in public, in the open. So we're gonna take the PowerPoint, offer to purchase OIP. These first, and the offer of purchase lot 22. Third issue will be the sale of the old Public Works Building, in that order. So stay online and we will get to it.
James, you ready?
Yes.
Jackie, are we recording again? All right, now let's call this session, regular session back into order at 6:52. Are there any motions coming out of executive session that need to be made? Counselor Kenyon.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve a rebate of $15,000 to the Jordans for the needed repair of a beam on the building they purchased.
My second.
All right, the motion was made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Hollis. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, Jackie, would you call the vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilor Burr.
Aye.
Councilor Kenyon.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum.
Aye.
Counselor Hollis.
Aye.
Jackie, did you get the motion on that? Yeah, it was to approve a rebate of $15,000 to the Jordan family on the recent purchase of the old Public Works Building. Is that okay, Counselor Ken?
For the needed repair of a beam on the building, yes.
All right, any other motions to be made out of executive session?
I move to direct the CA to resume conversations in regards to the offer of OIP lot 22. I'll second that.
Okay, the motion was made by Counselor Burr and seconded by Counselor Kenyon. Any discussion? All right, motion was to direct the CA to continue negotiations for the sale of lot 20.
22.
22, sorry. Jack, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor Ketchum.
Aye.
Councilor Burr.
Aye.
Lieutenant Yarson.
Aye.
Councilor Charman.
Aye.
Councilor Hollis.
Aye.
Councilor Kenyon.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. On to item 11, business from the city council. 11.1 is the change order number one for Green Waters Park Amphitheater remodeling. Before we get started, is there, are there any conflicts of interest to be declared?
I have a conflict of interest. I'm a part owner of On Top Instruction, so I will be recusing myself.
It'll be an actual conflict. All right, James.
Okay. So I think I explained in the last meeting that we found a bunch of dry rotting more than expected at we want to spark amphitheater, sent out some photos. Earlier today, so you could see what that actually looks like. Garments. Being a spoiler. Pretty bad, so we received a new estimate. The total cost, 21,065. To do this entire project, the total cost, 20,000 of that is being paid for by Banner Bank. Leading us with 21,465 dollars. Funding that we need to come up with. So in the agenda bill, there were some ideas of where this money could come from. After further research, we've come up with some better ideas which I wish you're on the top of the work. So again, what we need to come up with is 21,465 dollars. There's three buckets that that money can come from. There's $17,700 in the Parks Reserve Fund, which normally couldn't be spent until next year. However, if we do a supplemental budget, we can tap into that fund. We need to do a supplemental budget anyway, always already starting on that project. We also have $17,100 remaining in ARPA funds. And we have $22,492 in TRT funds, and this does qualify as a TRT activity because it's connected with who are these people come to the amphitheaters. Things like amphitheaters and convention centers, et cetera, to report events. Do you qualify?
Entertainment.
Entertainment. So we need the 21,465. My suggestion is we use the remainder of the ARPA funds, which would leave us with 4,365 we still need to come up with. That could be taken out of, I think, TRT might be the best way to go, because that money is available now. So we get that to On Top Construction to purchase supplies, et cetera. The ARPA money, using the ARPA money will also require supplemental budget, which we're going to need to do anyway. So we're hoping to have that. It has to be noticed, just like any budget. But we should be able to do that by December 7th, the preempt those funds, assuming that's agreed. So my suggestion, go up to council, where to come up with that money. Is ARPA, all of ARPA and TRT, but I'm open to suggestions on how to make that work.
What's the reason for not going for the Parks Reserve?
Because the Parks Reserve Fund also requires the supplemental budget, so that money wouldn't be available until after December 7th.
What is Parks Reserve money for?
So Parks Reserve money is future park uses, but it's coded in such a way in our budget that it's observed for future uses. You can't touch it during this budget year, this year, unless you do a supplemental budget.
We have other reasons that we need to do a supplemental budget anyways?
Yeah, grants have come in.
That's what I thought. I have a motion ready? I move that we use the remainder, $17,000 from the $17,100 from the ARPA funds, 3,000 from parks, and the remainder, 1,356 from TRT to repair for the amphitheater. That work?
It's only gonna give
Isn't that?
$1,000 to buy I mean, 20,000 dollars.
Did I give the wrong number?
21,465.
He's talking about money that's available now to do it versus supplemental budget.
Right, right. Parks Reserve, ARPA money is not, will not be available until December 7th, after supplemental budget.
Oh, so in other words, you're suggesting that we reduce more out of TRT?
That's my suggestion.
What is the amount that's needed for 21? No, just for the supplies? What was the estimate? There was an estimate.
Looks like $8,000 in materials. This might be just new material.
Can I just make a statement in regards to this? Is that okay? No. No, okay. That's okay. I just, I wanted to just bring something up, but that's okay.
The key is that you need access, pretty access to the funds immediately to buy some of the supplies and then.
So the park, is the parks the only one that he doesn't have access to?
In order.
TRT is the only one he has readily access to. That would deplete TRT a lot.
No, I'm saying, I am suggesting we use 4,365 from TRT.
Oh.
Because if we use all the rest of our ARPA funds, that's 17,100. Plus 4,365 equals 21,465.
Okay, so you're suggesting nothing out of parks, though?
Just because of the delay in payment. Now, so there is the $20,000 from Banner Bank. I don't know if that's in our account yet, and I don't know, Rick was saying that he was online, but he was having trouble with internet. I don't know who this, Jackie, do you know if we've received a $20,000 from Banner Bank?
Counselor Kenyon.
Another question. Isn't it okay to delay the work? We're talking in a few weeks and we already have it.
There already is.
The contractor's here, if you want to ask.
Don't we already have it wrapped?
It is wrapped. A couple of weeks isn't gonna hurt anything except for my schedule. But we're already two and a half weeks behind schedule on that project, so another couple of weeks isn't gonna hurt anything. It's not gonna get any worse as far as the dry rot goes. So if we have to wait until December 2nd for our next meeting and some budget changes to go through to take money out of parks and ARPA and leave the TRT alone. I don't have any idea what ARPA is or TRT, but we're plenty okay with waiting a couple of weeks. If, if that's what needs to be done.
I think supplemental will take longer than you're not doing.
We have, we have plenty of work on the schedule.
Counselor Hall, you want to reword or withdraw?
I'll withdraw, I'll reword. James, what was that number? You said all of ARPA, which is 17,100.
I would just say all of ARPA because it's actually like 17,100.
What is, what does that come out of TRT, though? Makes it 3,000?
I, I.
The remainder.
I know, but I want to know for my own, how much is gonna come out of TRT?
Roughly 4,365.
Can I ask a quick question real quick?
Please, go ahead.
So James, you're saying that we can't access ARPA or the parks? But Counselor Hollis is about to make a motion, still saying that the majority should come from ARPA. Is that what, what's happening?
Yes, we're basically earmarking it. We just, we just can't write the check out of the ARPA account or Parks Reserve account until we do something. It's like a locked account. We have to unlock the account first, then we can write the check.
So then technically, we can have the work being done if we're gonna pay for it afterwards, right? Don't usually get like 30 days to make a bill.
That's true.
So then would my original motion work?
That's what I was thinking.
Which is the change? It's usually you, 50%.
Yeah, you're right. The contract says half a month and half later, you're right. But the Banner Bank part would be the half of funding we got, we have.
So I just got an answer on that, Rick, and the banner money is a reimbursement, but if they didn't show, sorry, if they can show expenses, we can submit that now, Banner Bank. I'm sure we've, we've already paid a thousand something. So I'm sure we've got expenses already, yes, that we can get the invoice from. So the motion I'm looking for is using all the ARPA funds and then the remainder from TRT or parks. I don't care, but I think TRT is.
All right, your motion?
It just seems weird to me that we wouldn't take some money out of the parks, because this is clearly a parks project.
Can we ask On Top Instruction, can we afford it until December? We can wait until December to start their dry rot return.
Look.
We've been, well, I don't know if we can afford that. I'm not the money manager in the business. She is, so I have no idea what.
It would only be 3,000 from parks, right? It would need to be floated.
No, it would be, it would be floating $17,100 from ARPA, it would be floating $4,365 for parks, we want to do the remainder of parks. But Banner Bank, there's $20,000 in Banner Bank, ready to go.
We have to do a supplemental, no matter what, if we use the ARPA funds, correct?
Yeah, if we use ARPA funds or Parks Reserve funds, we have to do something.
I don't see that we have a problem here. We just need to figure out how money is coming.
I'll go back to my motion, which was, I move to pay for the Green Waters Amphitheater change order, all of ARPA, 3,000 from parks, and the remainder from TRT.
I'll second that.
All right, motion was made by Counselor Hollis, seconded by Counselor Yarson. Any further discussion on this issue? Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Yarson.
Aye.
Councilor Charman.
Aye.
Councilor Kenyon.
Aye.
Councilor Hollis.
Aye.
Mayor Ketchum.
Aye. All right, motion passes. 11.2, committee resolutions, recommendations from the admin committee. James, is this you or Counselor Ken?
It is me, yeah. That's what Kenyon made, jumping on some of these. Okay, so the admin committee, a lot of really good work. Doing all of current big resolutions that they are making 11 suggested changes to them. But it would be easier and a lot less work for me if we simply decided which ones were all the 11 changes we wanted to see. So I can then rewrite the resolutions rather than writing resolutions for the recommendations for the committee. I would say, yes and not this, I could redraft them. So the is it helpful by read off the suggestions?
If people, if people need them read off, or have you read through the agenda bill?
And if people have questions as to why, do you recommend you just think like?
Get a motion and then we need some more specifics, we can do this. So do I, oh, here a motion on this.
I move to remove all of the recommendations made by the administration advisory committee and direct the CA to draft new committee resolutions with council's consideration.
Well, here a second.
Okay.
So you can answer on?
Yes, sorry, I was turned away.
All right, motion made by Counselor Burr, same by Counselor Hollis. Discussion on this?
Sorry, I just have a couple of questions. One of the things is I was confused of why they would want to remove the council representative in a tie vote. I just, I'm not, I've never been on a committee, so I'm unfamiliar, but is that something? Because I've seen in other ones that that's pretty standard, but why would that want to be removed? I'm just curious.
They thought that the committees should be the citizens, the council is already getting a chance to vote in city council.
The council should be able to vote.
If, if, you know, hypothetical, there was a tie vote on something, I would still worry that the council's agenda would say, okay, the next committee voted 3 to 3, so it was tied, and here's the issue.
And what about the quorum, reducing it to three? Is there a reason for that?
Yes, because they are suggesting that we reduce the number of voting members on every committee. It's currently in six to five, because.
And that three would be that.
Yeah, we got, we got somebody who makes it fair, we need, we don't have.
Got it, okay.
But it would be sunsetted for a couple committees that are full. Everyone stay on committee, so someone quits for the term, so.
Got it, okay. Those are the only questions I have.
Anyone else for the question? So, please go ahead.
I actually do, I have a number four that says changing the voting requirements to take requirement to take action to a simple majority vote from the voting members in attendance at a meeting. I don't personally remember discussing that in our I wondered if it happened when I wasn't there, so I personally I believe that, that my committee would have made that suggestion. But I personally don't believe in it. Though, I, I mean, I, I think votes should always be a quorum, you know, more, one more than the required forum, instead of who's in attendance, because this had literally named it two people and because two people are allowed to live outside of city limits, two people could vote on something and have come to council. And since the general stance of council is, if a committee recommended it, we need to approve it, then I, I don't feel like that's appropriate.
Obviously, if that happened, I would, I would make sure council was aware that it was a two to one vote.
Well, this is, this would allow two people, like.
No, they have to have a quorum.
Oh, quorum would be three, and then two of them.
Could make the decision.
Could make the decision. I don't know. That's just my opinion.
Did the committees themselves get a chance to make an input into these revised resolutions?
Yes, for instance, the ODAC. They have a new resolution.
Right.
Back burner for a while. They want the citizen issues. And they also think that council shouldn't vote in that committee, so yes. Not every single committee has been asked for their input. But there have been committees that have wanted similar things.
Right. Counselor Kenyon.
Um, all of the committees were able to participate when these, when all of these resolutions originated, which was just a few years ago. And me and.
It was you and Tresh.
Right, when mine was coming on board, but anyway. Yes, all the committees participated, including ODAC. But then the, all the members of ODAC changed, and now they want something different. So.
So ODAC doesn't agree with these changes, is that what you're telling me?
No, I think that ODAC made some recommendations specific to their committee. In addition to all these, basically, the reason why this even started is because we discovered after they were printed that some of them might have said counselor votes only in a tie, and others said counselor votes always, or counselor, you know, there were differences, even though the intention when they were created was to be the same across the board on those issues that are standard and not specific to their, to their committee.
For instance, ODAC, in, in the current resolution, the city councillor is one of seven voting members, but they can only vote in the top in the resolution that ODAC wants to be passed. They do not want the city councillor to vote. They want seven voting members, not the city councillor, but the seventh person would be a member appointed by Pete Popey, Wesper, Chamber of Commerce Board.
But because they brought that up, then our committee discussion, the committee members felt that it seemed appropriate to them for the exact same reason, to make that rule across the board on all committees, instead of just ODAC.
So if there's a, something particularly germane to the, to a committee that's not standard rules of operating procedure, they would have the ability to insert that into their resolution?
And they are, they are.
Okay, okay, that's all. Any other discussion? Counselor Yarson, is your hand up? I'm sorry.
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I disagree with removing the voting power from the council representatives. And I also disagree with changing the voter, voting requirement to take action as a simple majority. I think if they're reducing their, their member number, and also reducing quorum to three, I think something to pass or take action should still be a quorum like it is for council.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. All right, is a motion on the, I have one more comment. Counselor Kenyon.
Um, well, I would like the motion to reflect to remove number four.
Um, it's not your motion, but you want to amend it tonight?
Oh, yes. I would like to amend the motion to remove item number four.
We have to remove the entire, I am, because if we just take out the words in attendance.
It's kind of redundant, isn't it? Just add it in there. That's already the rule, right?
Right, so just remove the whole thing.
All right, is a motion on the table. Is there a second for that?
A second for the amendment?
Yes.
Right, and the amendment is to remove item four from the list of changes to be made. Any discussion on the amendment? All right, on the amendment, Jackie, if you call for a vote. Nay.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Councilor Hollis.
Aye.
Councilor Burr.
Aye.
Councilor Yarson.
Nay.
Lieutenant Charman.
Nay.
So motion fails? Is that the amendment fails? Okay.
Sorry, can I clarify something real quick?
Yeah, I think you misvoted perhaps.
Well, I didn't realize we were voting on just the amendment, because I agree with the amendment. Sorry, I thought we were voting on the entire thing.
So you're going to change your vote to an aye?
For the amendment, yes. I'm sorry about that. I misheard.
Okay, so then it's four to three, four to two, Jackie, is that correct? All right, motion passed on the amendment. Uh, any discussion back on the original motion? Counselor Kenyon.
I would just want to ask Counselor Yarson, were you wanting to make an amendment to remove item number one?
Uh, yes, I'd absolutely do that. I just didn't think that the majority agreed with me.
I do.
I do.
We would need to look at each, does each committee is different? It's just committees that council can vote.
I know, I just, back to what councillor Kenya was saying, we did, took on this project three years ago to consistent, make the committees consistent. And here we are changing them all for one committee. And.
I agree.
We're going exactly back, well, we're, we're making them all different again, and that was exactly. Aren't we?
No. All the same, the council cannot vote in all its committees.
But there aren't none that exist that way, no. So that, no, it does not, that's what they want, but that is not what their current one is written.
The city councillor, uh, only voting at the top.
It makes them a voting member though, which matters for, uh, the form.
So.
This was like a year-long process and a lot of work put into it, and here we are changing for one committee and we're going exactly. Exactly back to making committees inconsistent.
So this, if you remove one, that means you no longer need two. And you no longer need three. So, we're at a point where we're just erasing this whole thing, because you, you don't need to reduce the enough members on the committees, because the councillor is now voting.
Right.
It's, everything's just.
And, and in full point of order, um, the councillor, the appointed councillor can vote. At any time on this R T and P R T committee. Doesn't have to be tied, they, they, they just get to vote.
It wasn't supposed to be that way.
So. Is there amendment, another motion on an additional amendment?
I'll move to remove item number one.
I'll second.
Actually, I'd like to change that motion. Sorry, I'm gonna pull that. I, I would like to remove item number one or cha- and change it to. Um, make all committees. That the councillor can vote in the event of a tie.
I'll second that.
But we need to change quorum too, because now you have six, you have six voting members. On the committee, which means quorum will now be four. Majority of the voting members. So we need to change item three. To put quorum back up to four.
Yeah, that's what I said, if you start changing with one, you're gonna have to work with two and three for loving.
Okay, then, uh, the amendment, another, I'm gonna restate that motion, rescinded. To remove number one and number three. And make it consistent on all committees. That the coun- councillor only votes in the. Event of a tie.
I'll second that.
All right, motion was made by councillor Ken, second by councillor Brisonson, discussion on this amendment.
You leaving number four? That was part of the original amendment was.
No, that one's already passed.
But that's, that's in the major motion that we're still dealing with, still on the table.
Okay, got it, so that one's still in effect, okay, sorry, just wanna make sure I was. Correct on.
Counselor Charman.
I feel like we're making some changes right now that we should. Send back. The committee. To go back through and. Make sure this makes sense.
I, I do too, because I, I think item two is no longer appropriate as well, so I, I just think James needs to take it back and. Take our comments and do a consideration and maybe come back with some other options. But this motion on the table, so.
Well, remember, um. That can also happen because these. Are just suggestions to rewrite all of them anyways. They will be rewritten. And come back to us for final approval.
But we're mandating what he's, has to put in these things, so I. To me, it's so complex now that we monkey with it so much that we just. Send it back and bring it back to the council at a different time. But.
We do have a motion.
We do, and if there's another discussion, we'll take a vote on. Jackie, would you go for a vote, please? Nay.
Hi.
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 All right, motion on that amendment passes. And now we're back to the original motion, which was. To remove item four. From the. Is that right, James? What was the motion, Jackie? Sorry, can you read that back for the primary motion? No, I know what it was, it was to move to approve recommend, all the recommendations. Or, and the numbers listed. Made by the Administrative Advisory Committee and Director C A to draft a new committee resolution for the council's consideration, so. And the amendment was to remove item four, and then the second amendment was to.
Remove one and three.
One and three. All right, so on the primary motion, can we have any discussion first? The primary motion with your motion.
Or is it already, I'm so sorry, this has all been very confusing.
It is for me.
Well, that's a good question, it's, we've already passed amendments on a motion, can that motion be rescinded?
Like it kind of like over.
And what happens if it is rescinded, do all the amendments go away?
Oh, yeah.
Well, basically, if that is passed, then this goes through without those numbers on.
And I thought that my motion had the discussion and then Don made the amendment.
To remove number four.
To remove number four.
Right.
Then we made another amendment to remove number one.
One and three, okay. Yeah, change number one to say something else and remove number three.
Yes, so now it goes back to your motion, if that is passed. This is passed minus one, three and four, okay.
So right now we're voting on leaving all of these minus one, three and four. Okay, perfect.
So you're not rescinding?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Primary motion. Jack, would you go for a vote, please?
Hi.
Nay.
Maxler Burger.
Hi.
Nay.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. Thankfully. We're on to eleven point three. Um, warming center fee waiver request, James?
All right, uh, just council, recall, we tabled this from the last meeting. But it's been requested. That. Use these ways, warming center this winter from December through March. Do you get a screen on that? From six P M to seven A M. On nights, it is all already reserved and it's forecasted to be below freezing.
Okay. So here, motion on this.
I move to allow green Mars Park community building to be recent ease way for the warming center this winter from December through March. From six P M to seven A M on nights when it's not already reserved and forecasted to be below freezing.
Go here a second?
Second.
All right, the motion made by councillor Tormand, second by councillor Hollitt, discussion on this issue.
I wanted to. Point out that we're. Councilors. Hollitt and Brewer and I. Got together and talked about making a resolution for, um. Which will be forthcoming, we actually designed it already, but making a resolution to. Set. Policy on approving. Fee waivers for. Not-for-profit or nonprofit. And not for. Uh, for profits, excuse me, that's a lot. Lot of words, but anyway, that's gonna be forthcoming, and so, um, I wanted to just explain that that's the reason why we wanted to delay. Uh, approving this at our last. Council meeting. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get it through onto this agenda, but it will be at our next meeting.
So the three of you had a meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's totally reasonable.
Good, good. Um, any other discussion on this?
Um, we can't. We can't discuss how we're gonna vote on something.
I know, but that's not how you work it.
We met to have. To work on a proposal, a proposed resolution. And it's only not allowed if there's quorum, four or more, it is allowed three.
I, I knew all that, I just was pointing out that.
I think that was because it was sent to all councillors.
Well, this is, this is off the agenda, so we'll just, uh, move on with that, um, any other discussion on the warming center? All right, uh, I'm. Still opposed to the way it was framed, this is much more than a fee waiver, this is. A fee waiver plus the acknowledgement that you're going to spend four hundred dollars more a month on insurance. Not that I'm opposed to the warming center, but I don't like the way it's structured as a fee waiver. Uh, in addition, every single volunteer that's working at that, well, uh, the warming center. Will be insured by the city, so, uh, it's a liability that I think probably should have been worried. Almost as a city-sponsored event, not a fee waiver for some organization that doesn't exist. So. In any case, uh, Jack, would you call for a vote, please?
Lover.
Hi.
Councilor Yarson.
Hi.
Hi.
Councilor Ken.
Hi.
Councilor Charman.
Hi.
Mayor Gushen.
Motion passes. All right. To eleven point four. Which is, uh, no, we're tabling that, postponing that. Onto, uh, tabling eleven point five, we have a date, James, or do you want to postpone it?
From councillor Yarson, Hollitt. Brewer, I think, or maybe just.
Um, I, I can just give a quick update that we, um, pulled in Linda, Mick and Michelle Emmons, just to make sure we. Have some good, resourceful people to help with an updated letter that might be a little different than last times.
Yeah, just if we're gonna table it, should come up with a next session, but if we're not, then it should just be postponed.
We're tabling it. For.
Postponing.
Postponing, thank you. Oh, the letter.
TV dude. Okay, then we're on to eleven point six, which is a holiday light parade fee waiver and TRT funding request. Uh, before we get started, are there any conflicts of interest to be declared here? Okay, James?
Okay, uh, this issue was tabled last time. Added a little bit to it in, uh, form of a five hundred dollar TRT. Request to purchase, uh, permanent lighting. For the amphitheater. Which hopefully we've done by, this is signed, who knows, whenever it's done, um.
We'll string holiday lights on an unfinished project, that's no big deal.
Yes, the idea is to add more lighting to put the holiday lights up.
Ooh, good point.
The idea is we want the same kind of lights that we have on City Hall. And places where you could change the color so that it could be used for. Some event where their color was blue, they can change it to blue. It's a time, red. Whatever. Now, my amphitheater. Look good. So, so requests to hold. We, we waiver request. Be able to use, yeah, you may be. Building in part. September ninth. And first up to five hundred dollars in TRT funds. For lighting, please.
All right, Joy, your emotions?
I move to approve the fee waiver request for the annual holiday light parade and up to five hundred dollars in TRT funds for lights for the amphitheater.
I'll second.
She made by councillor Brewer, second by councillor Kenyon, discussion on this question with staff. Counselor Ken.
Um, I would only ask why the. Even though it's fine to do it at once, I guess, but why would the TRT request? Come from here and not just from the city. Question, because this, this is something that's gonna be used for all. Events, not just the light parade, uh.
Well, that was, yeah, I kind of suggested it because I thought that it would be used at the amphitheater for all year round. So it's not really a part of the parade, it just so happens that I asked. While we're getting coordinated for this.
Yeah, the issues could be separated, but you know. It's kind of like the pork bill, pork barrel project, Congress, and then they, we throw something in, we, and we want to get the lights up before September ninth. For the. Holiday parade, so they. Kind of what they did. More related, some of the pork barrel.
It's called, it's called correctional directed spending, no?
Yeah.
Make it more sense better.
Okay, that was my only comment.
I just have one thing. I just want to point out that, um, the way that, um, I just want to make sure everyone knows, the light parade is kind of a, a separate event. That the fire department is traditionally put on, um, to collect toys for tots, food for Lain County, and. Originally, it was just the fire department, but we've invited other businesses to be in part of it. So the Green Waters Park portion is really just a landing for the parade to end at, and also for other groups to come in and. Just, um, enjoy the park and do some fun stuff, so. The, the light request was a request I had made to James, um, and like we just explained a second ago, it's really for. The amphitheater, it's not for the parade.
Okay, any other discussion here? James, to, to whom is the check going to be made out for TRT funds?
Uh, wherever we purchase.
So you're gonna, you're gonna go out and buy your T-buns, the lights?
It's.
Okay.
City park, right?
This, yes, it is.
Okay, and, um. The. So we've, this is gonna drive the parade, changing their destination, their final destination.
Yeah, we thought it would be safer to have it end at. Art rather than ending here on. First Street where.
I'm kind of, I'm kind of baffled, because you're gonna be parading down Highway fifty-eight?
Oh, sorry.
No, no, no.
What, and what kind of, yeah, no one is gonna be walking.
So it didn't used to end at uptown, that was just a pit stop. So instead, it's going to continue flowing and there are not walkers like there used to be. So it will go down to Hill, Hills Creek, uh, or Hills Street, as it always has. And it'll pull into Green Waters Park, so there, it ends there. There is no highway parade.
I mean, you have to, the vehicles have to go on the highway to get to. Greenwater, something.
From, from hills, yes.
So is this gonna require an ODAC? Permit of some sort?
No, because we're not gonna have walkers. This, this parade crosses, I would be, uh, two other times.
One time.
No, this is.
One time.
I thought it started at the high school and then goes down.
No, it starts at the fire department on School Street, loops around the back and crosses at River, and the police do each. Um, yes, they do stop traffic, and then the parade crosses and there are no walkers.
So is there something reported from ODAC to stop traffic on their highway?
Um, we have involved them before, but they have never required us to get a permit.
Please, please check and make sure we aren't going to irritate our. Partners, probably, at least. Yambol, I think. That's the guy you wanted to speak to.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Steve.
Uh, for some reason, my video is not working. Uh, but if we stop traffic and have emergency lights on on the highway, we do have to get a permit.
But we haven't in years past, um. We haven't done it when we were, we were supposed to.
Well, well, let's track this down and do it the right way, please.
And I will confirm that with ODOT.
Thanks, Steve. Alright, is there any discussion on this before we go to a vote? Alright, Jack, would you call for a vote, please?
Mayor.
Nay.
Hi.
Counselor Trump.
Hi.
Counselor Yonson.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Okay, and I started and repeat the motion, it was to approve the fee waiver request for the annual holiday parade up to, and up to five hundred dollars in TRT funds for lights for the amphitheater. Alright, moving on to. Well, this is from the city administrator, other city business updates, James?
Yes, so um. Next week. November eighth, once you know November eighth, from eleven to one, we are hosting the U-Borg cities, small cities. Uh, meeting. And I would, I need to know if any city counselors would like to attend that meeting. So that we can order the right amount of lectures, et cetera.
What day?
Uh, next Wednesday, November eighth. Eleven to one. Here in City Hall, hosted by the city of Westford. Topic of discussion. It's updates from all of the cities, and then the topic of discussion led by LLC is changes to TRT.
I'm already registered, just so you know.
Okay. Make this a judgment, can we record that meeting on Zoom?
I'll ask, I'll ask LLC, it'll be up to them.
I'll be there.
Okay. I'll point to. So, Brewer, I mean. And you're, you're already signed up.
Yeah.
I will sign up. Also, spit on the radar, the Oak Ridge Economic Summit. December thirteenth, that's also a Wednesday. But these are gonna be around twelve.
I'm sorry, what day was that?
December thirteenth, it was originally. Uh, gonna be next week, but it got postponed. Yeah, that's all I needed.
Alright. Moving on to item fourteen, ordinances and resolutions with public comment. Fourteen point one ordinance nine forty-two, a new parade ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance seventy-five, James?
Alright, so this one is the new parade ordinance, and it has been reviewed by the city attorney. I included the old. Resolution and the new one. Admin committee. Boy, the man's league, to recommend this new city ordinance to safety. Parades. Definitely from. Uh, staff. These parade organizers, we test our.
Okay. Uh, so I hear a motion.
Move to approve the first reading of ordinance nine forty-two for appeal and place. Ordinance seventy-five.
Take a second.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Council Terman, second by Council Kenyon. Uh, any discussion on this or questions of staff? Okay, um, any public comment on ordinance nine forty-two? In room or on the Zoom platform? And it's been on, available for review at City Hall, James, okay? Alright, with no discussion, um. James, you wanna read it now?
Alright, ordinance nine twenty-two, an ordinance repealing and replacing chapter seventy-five of Oak Ridge Municipal Code. Codes, grades, and processions. Whereas, we're going to article nine, section two of the Oregon Constitution and the Oak Ridge Charter. City of Oak Ridge is a vulnerable municipality in the hollow towers. That the constitution is in statutes and common law of the United States state organs expressly or implied in the grant or allow of a city, and. Whereas, the city of Oak Ridge desires to update its parades and processions organs to address safety concerns. In order to protect the health, safety of all their citizenry, and. Whereas the city of Oak Ridge desires to repeal. Existing parades and processions organs found in chapter seventy-five of the Oak Ridge municipal code and replace it with the revised chapter seventy-five as set form of. Exhibit now. Catching warrants nine twenty-two, and now therefore. Zero upgrade or things as follows. Section on chapter seventy-five of the Oak Ridge municipal code is hereby repealed and replaced with revised chapter seventy-five as set form of exhibit one. Passion, here to incorporate. Section two, severability clause, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is or any reason of valid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction. Such portion shall be deemed separate, distinct, and independent. Vision, such holding shall not affect the validity of the remaining portion. Section three, effective date of ordinance, ordinance necessary for the protection of public health, public safety, and the public property, and is. That can immediately upon adoption. Written pass by vote over to council on such subject. Proven sent by the mayor on such subject.
Okay. Jackie, would you call for a vote on this, please?
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Trump.
Hi.
Mayor question?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright, motion passing unanimously, is there any other, are there any other motions to be made?
I have a motion. I move to approve and adopt ordinance nine forty-two. To repeal and replace ordinance seventy-five after the second reading by title only.
Second. Alright, motion made by Council Kenyon, second by Council Terman, discussion on the second motion.
I actually have a quick question, does anyone know? Off the top of their head, if we can do title only, when we adopt, when we are making it to be effective immediately? It's.
Okay, again.
Okay. Right then, I like motion.
Okay, with no discussion, the motion was to approve and adopt orders time forty-two to repeal and replace ordinance seventy-five after the second reading by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Trump.
Hi.
Counselor Yonson.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Yonson.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Mayor question?
Bye. Alright, motion passing unanimously. Onto. Yes, please.
Ordinance nine forty-two, an ordinance repealing and replacing chapter seventy-five, Oak Ridge Municipal Code, parades and procession.
Thank you. Onto fourteen point two, ordinance nine forty-three, non-criminal administrative warrants and abatement ordinances, municipal ninety-three point one eight through ninety-three point two. James?
Alright, so this. Until now, we have not had the ability to uh, enter onto private property. To inspect for ordinance violations, unless of course, the president uh. Blanks permission to do that. This ordinance does two things, number one, it lets us. Getting warrant from the judge to be able to enter on some private property. If there's probably a costly violation that's occurred. And the other thing it does is it allows the city to go in and. Do that big work that needs to be done. And then charge the homeowner, again, it also uh, require two separate warrants. Uh, signed by the judge. These warrants will only be signed if we can. The city can convince the judge, we have tried and tried to contact them, cite them. Just keep refusing to cooperate. With data fines. Seven. So it's, it's not like, we're just gonna. Go on in this property, maybe your judge would never go to that. It's just the tools that. Pretty much every other city has, we just. Uh, Chief Martin available to answer your questions, uh, this was drafted by our city attorney, who has. Great. Fond experience dealing with that, which is what's. But similar to other. Works.
Okay, so I hear motion?
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance. Nine forty-three, adding sections ninety. Three point eighteen through ninety-three point twenty-two to the Oak Ridge Municipal Code.
I hear a second. Motion made by Council Kenyon, second by Council Terman, uh. Any public comment on ordinance nine forty-three? Any public comment on the Zoom platform? Alright, any discussion questions of council? In the staff?
We have.
Please.
Um. The, this can, I understand, be a really touchy thing, there's some people in here that like to live in their surroundings regardless of what they look like. So my question is, um, who will be serving the warrants? Um, and who is the code enforcement officer, because those are referenced in. The, the wording, so that's my question, and if they will have any special training, if they're not gonna be actual police officers.
All of our police officers are. Public enforcement officers.
Are they gonna be the ones serving the warrants? Or is it?
Yes, because.
Public workers.
We're only, we're only gonna do this if we're being a lot of pushback from someone. They won't.
Yeah.
Let us on, so we already know it's probably gonna be contentious, so there will. Definitely be a police officer. Involved.
Okay, that's all my question was, is basically, we have a plan to keep our public works, people safe in the case of a altercation, so. I had a feeling that would be the answer.
Hey, any other discussion questions?
Uh, this is uh, Chief, Chief Martin.
Here.
Just a, a point to it. Most likely, we'll be the ones serving it, and you know, there, it could be something as simple of, we have lots. We have to deal with every spring and summer that don't mow their lawns, and that's kind of an easy example of. Filling out the process, doing the warrants, and then having a, I would like to have a list of contractors that we can say. Hey, can you come mow this lawn, you know, type of thing, and that's, and the lean comes in later. To the most complicated thing of our zombie houses and our junk houses where we'll have to abate. Uh, the city will, and of course, the police officers aren't gonna clean that stuff up, so it'll either be city crew, or. Again, I'd like to have a list of contractors that might be interested in that type of work that we can call on. To do some of that stuff. Uh, the one piece that's not here, at least for this fiscal year, is funding. Uh, so that's something for the council to think about going into the future, that we are gonna go through an abatement on a house. And we do the warrants, we are going to have to spend the money to, to do it, so. Something for the council to be mindful and think about for future funding cycles, and then also the. If people have thoughts and ideas about public works or contractors and so on and so forth.
Thanks, Steve. James, I, I read through there, I didn't see any mechanism in, in writing about how you had the ability to lean after you've done the abatement? Is that just assumed, or is it?
That's just assumed, because we can, we have to. We know we can also use our collections agency.
So you would just follow the lane whenever you, whenever you figure out what the abatement cost, you can follow the lane on the property if it, if it was.
Yeah, if, if we have to, again, we're gonna keep, we're gonna try and try and get.
Okay, um, do you wanna read the ordinance, please?
Alright. Ordinance nine forty-three, ordinance adding sections nine, ninety-three point eighteen to ninety-three point two. In chapter ninety-three. Of title nine, general regulations of the Oak Ridge Municipal Code and adopting severability clause. Whereas, Oak Ridge Municipal Code, section ninety-three point one seven divides the city administrator, releasing the. To obtain compliance in certain city ordinances for inspection, notification, or appropriate. Citation for civil interactions or abatement. With the intent of protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the citizenry. Whereas, city code enforcement officials regularly enter onto private property with consent to inspect for compliance. City ordinances, and whereas the city administrator occasionally has reasonable cause to believe violations of certain city ordinances. Are occurring on private property that jeopardize public health and safety, but the owner of said property is. Unable or unwilling to give consent to an administrative inspection. And whereas officials of the city of Oak Ridge cannot constitutionally enter onto private property to conduct administrative inspection or abatement. Without consent unless in an emergency. Existed circumstances or pursuant to initially authorized administrative inspection, abatement warrant. Supported by reasonable causes, and. Whereas, it is in the public interest of the city of Oak Ridge to authorize the city administrator or the need to obtain administrative inspection, abatement warrants. Enter onto private property, inspect or abate without consent of the property owner. Project the health, safety, and welfare of the citizenry. Now therefore, the city of Oak Ridge, it follows. Section one. Chapter ninety-three of the Oak Ridge Municipal Code is hereby amended to act section ninety-three point one eight. Three point two-two, establishing the city administrator's authority to obtain administrative inspection, abatement warrants, providing procedure. Establishing standards for issuing. Executing such warrants when consent to conduct a search or to abate is denied and cannot be obtained. As more particularly described in set four. One attached here to incorporate herein by reference. Section two, such as provided herein. Chapter ninety-three shall continue in full force and effect. Section three, severability clause, any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction. Such portion shall be deemed a separate state and independent provision, and such holding. Shall not affect the validity of the remaining portion of the era. Section four, effective date of ordinance, this ordinance shall take effect thirty days after its adoption by council and. Written pass and adopted by the city council. So the date approved and signed by the mayor of the city of Oak Ridge on certain date.
Thanks, James, and Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Trump.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Mayor question?
Hi.
Counselor Yonson.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Alright, motion passes, before we go on, uh, this council. You hang in for another fifteen minutes to finish business on the agenda, anyone not be able to do that? Okay, are there any other motions for this?
I move to approve and adopt ordinance nine forty-three. Adding sections ninety-three point eight through ninety-three point twenty-two. To the Oak Ridge Municipal Code after a second reading by title only.
I hear a second on this?
Second.
Yeah, motion made by Council Kenyon, second by Council Terman. Uh, any discussion? Okay, James, can you read by title only, please?
Ordinance number nine forty-three, an ordinance adding section ninety-three point one eight, ninety-three point two, chapter ninety-three. Uh, type of nine. General regulations of the Oak Ridge Municipal Code and adopting severability clause.
Okay, uh, the motion was uh, to uh. Approve and adopt ordinance nine forty-three, adding sections ninety-three point one eight, ninety-three point two-two to the Oak Ridge Municipal Code after a second reading by title only. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please? Bye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Hollis.
Hi.
Counselor Brewer.
Hi.
Counselor Yonson.
Hi.
Counselor Trump.
Hi. Alright, motion passes, on to item sixteen. Department Staff Board Committee Commission reports. Department Staff Board Committee Commission Reports, 16.1 Parks and Community Services Committee, that you or is that Rick?
Uh, Rick's out.
Okay.
Um, so we met, uh, we talked about best contract updates and are moving forward. Um, we talked about the project over in White Zone, which was brought to council. That's um, got some disco or some dates, maintenance, et cetera. Um, we also talked about the same creep part, the green bouncy frog that was missing from the I, Smith told me it's a blank sword.
Hmm.
I don't know. But anyways, it's missing. Wondering what happened to it. Broke off.
Oh.
So Rick was going to look in what happened to it and see if we can fix this.
The big kids, right?
They look, yeah. It had a, you could see it had a stress fracture and a steel that moved across. Um, and then the DL CD grant updates. Don't
Department of Land Conservation.
Yes.
Okay, uh 16.2 Public Safety Committee, see you.
Yes. All right, uh we reviewed, um, the city's emergency operation plans, various plans. Uh, that took the most of the uh, we also discussed the ongoing current, uh, hiring process for the additional police officer. And then we discussed, um, the proposed uh, ordinance that we just passed and I forgot the for passing the public safety policies for that. But we did.
Okay. 16.3 Charter Review Subcommittee, Council Kenyon.
Um, that committee met and just did ongoing work on the charter review. We are well into our second half already and uh, we bumped up to twice a month meetings in order to facilitate the process happening faster.
Yeah. 16.4 ODEC, see you.
All right, they mentioned that twice, one was a special meeting last night, the recognition council on sale. We acquired that, uh, they gave input to the, uh, roll up to the initiative grant that we've submitted. The review. Uh, other offers and they're going to help plan the economic summit on September 13th, we'll have a big planning next. Next Wednesday, if I begin to next O D A, just open to all. That that's going to be in a post, continuing planning, the economic summit. We also got, uh, an in-depth, uh, report from line of staff, the general manager, Mindy. Those are plans for future, very exciting stuff. That's done. Other oddities.
Uh, 16.5 Admin Committee, Council Kenyon.
Um I apologize, I didn't prepare any of my many reports tonight, so.
Finish those recommendations and then we also, they also finalize that, uh, at next meeting, they have a resolution for conduct of all meetings, not conduct, but that.
But I know. No?
It's not really, it's like, uh, how you should be run. Expectations, many expectations.
16.6 Library Board, is anyone there? James, can you make it?
I do not, I don't think that.
I went to their last one. They only meet once every two months.
Yeah, so.
And that was, I've already reported.
Yep, we did. Thank you. 16.7 WAC Subcommittee, Council Haunt.
Our last meeting, we reported on the lack. Well, thank you. So nothing since our last meeting.
16.8 WAC Funding Committee, I was, had a conflict, uh, James.
Uh, yeah, we just kept discussing additional opportunities for funding basement input for that million dollar fee and grant.
Okay. All right, um, 17, other business, any other business, Council Kenyon?
I wondered that. I thought of a question earlier that I wanted to ask you. So what status have we has a collection agency started their work yet?
Yes, we put pen to paper, um, they have not promised any money yet, but they are
Okay. So we've submitted like our fire.
Do you think that I have this, you know?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not sure, but I, I can check the effects. I know that we do have a list, I just don't know if it's absolutely.
Any other, other business? Okay. Public comment, any public comment in the room or on the Zoom? Mr. Berkeley?
Dan Barkley, 47501, Highway 58. First of all, I wanted to commend council for their, their conduct this evening. Unlike most meetings in the last several months, few months, whatever, there hasn't been the, the open uh tantrums and childishness and so on and so forth that seem to replace common sense and common courtesy along the way. And that did not happen tonight. I wanted to commend council for, for that, you know, change in behavior. Second, I find it interesting that anyone who, any elected official who should be familiar with public meetings law would suggest in any way, shape, or form that a meeting of three or less council members that there is anything unethical, illegal, so on and so forth. If you, if you have, if you're genuinely concerned with that, I would suggest you reach out to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission and they can, uh, maybe enlighten you or, or fill the void in your training there. Um, and code of conduct basically the code of conduct exists, so the council members play nice in, in meetings, okay? And Dawn, Council Kenyon, can, can correct me if I'm wrong, but as I recall, the code of conduct replaced, um well, it used to be called rules of decorum eight, 10 years ago. Uh, so that somebody could, you know, lift his leg and put his name on, on this is mine kind of thing. But what it also did the, the rules of decorum applied to every person in attendance or participating in a meeting, citizens, staff, council, everybody. The code of conduct is specific to council, staff, people on committees, that sort of thing. And 99% of this community are not subject to that code of conduct. So that opens the door for anybody from the peanut gallery, a has-been mayor, whatever, to openly attack or criticize or whatever, council. And there's, there's no recourse. At some point, hopefully, the council can, can come up with some, call it what you like, it's it doesn't matter what the name is. It's all, you know, let's all play nice and act like grown up people and so on and so forth. But it's inconsistent when one counselor wrongly, in my opinion, is chastised for violating code of conduct that has been violated routinely. And then later in public comment a, uh, citizen has been mayor is allowed to do exactly that from the floor to the council. You know, you deserve the same respect that you give, same, same as anybody else. And, and the rules should apply to anyone attending these meetings. Not, not just public officials. Anyhow, I, I just wanted to, I think that covered everything I wanted to talk about. Oh, and crossing the highway at Hill Street instead of River, Ab, River Avenue? Like we've been doing for 16, 17 years, reaching out to O D A? We didn't, we didn't reach out to them crossing the river avenues, so it just seems kind of silly, but whatever.
Thanks for your comments, sir. All right, sir, motion to adjourn?
I saw move.
All right. Please adjourn at, uh, eight, yeah.